13, 2025, Goshen Board of Education meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
Marky?
Here.
Peprocky?
Here.
Mr. Rera?
Here.
This is Gray.
Here. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's board meeting?
Submit.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for matters under Section D, personal motions under the employment.
Do we have a second?
Second. Did you get it? Motion or my second? I made a motion. Your second.
We have a motion.
Yeah, two motions. Yeah. Corey made the motion. Oh, Corey did? Okay, yeah, second. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Your second.
Yeah, second.
Corey's motion, Bill's second. Do we have discussion?
I just want to be clear, so we're just in executive session.
We are amending the...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll clarify just so.
Okay.
So, we have a motion on the table to amend the agenda to add executive session before 9D regarding employment.
Correct.
We have a second by Bill.
A second.
Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
This is Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. Rera?
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes. I'd like to call for a moment of silence as we face a new year and consider all the people who are navigating on the West Coast. Thank you. I'd like to ask Principal Flynn to lead us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason, just as for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. We also introduce our student achievement from GMS. Thank you so much.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. For those of you that don't know me, Wendy Flynn, I'm the principal, lucky principal at Goshen Middle School. We're super excited to be here tonight, and I'm not going to talk a lot. Typically, I give kind of an overview about Portrait of a Graduate and the target areas that we set, top to bottom, right? And I think you're going to hear in our presentation tonight how, from top to bottom, we're all on the same page. And I think that's what makes Goshen special and specifically, from my perspective, what makes the middle school special. The three individual teachers that are here tonight and the students that represent the opportunities those teachers provide for them and through that you guys provide, they're going to show that Portrait of a Graduate is always at the forefront of our mind. We are always focused on bringing opportunities for our students to be thinking about their future, future-ready warriors. We take that responsibility really seriously. And the amazing thing about the staff at the middle school that I wanted to highlight is that whether it be Kelly Deneau, who took on a new role last year, I gave her a vision. And again, it always comes back to what's best for our students. And that's, again, what I love about Goshen. So, I gave her a vision, and she made it a thousand times better and ran with it and has created, which you're going to hear about tonight, amazing opportunities for our students. Mr. Dietrich, the same thing. A few years before that, I threw out an idea, and I said, "We need a newscast at our middle school. We need to provide those opportunities." And within minutes, Kurt volunteered and said, "Yes, this is something I think I want to be involved in. You're going to hear a little bit about that tonight." Mrs. Shaw has two little ones and is a single mom at times, so she's on her way. And so, but she's going to talk to you about another opportunity that she ran with that came from a grant that Mr. Baughman and Mr. Dobbs provided. And again, it's bringing amazing opportunities. So, with all of that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Deneau and Mr. Dietrich to start.
Thank you. All right. You guys want to just... Oh, sorry. You just want to come up here? That way, you can in and out at the same time, back and forth. All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Deneau, a middle school teacher at Goshen Middle School.
Sure. And I am Kurt Dietrich, also a teacher at the middle school.
And I'll introduce them in a second, but we're going to tell you a little bit how we are and have been future-ready at Goshen Middle School. Not only are we offering the students real-world experiences in the classroom, but we're also providing them outside of the classrooms. They've been very unique, and hopefully, it's helping them, you know, ignite their curiosity and explore the things that they're very curious about. So, we look forward to showing you these programs and how they are, you know, generating curiosity for their future. So, I first want to... I want you guys to meet our future-ready stars. Not only have we selected them tonight because they have experienced some of the things that we're going to talk about, but these are also standout students who are just absolute leaders in our building, and I just needed that to be pointed out, like, top-notch right here. So, I really do appreciate everything that you guys are doing. Audrey Harville is in the middle there, and then we have Shelby Phillips right here, and then we have Lola Ralph on the end. Chance Libius was supposed to come, but I'm not sure what happened, but you'll see a little bit of him in just a second, so... All right. Turn it over to Mr. Dietrich.
All right. So, I had the very fortunate privilege to join these students, a few others. We took about eight students to WLWT for a field trip. And first of all, I want to thank Mrs. Myris at the middle school for setting it up, arranging the trip, working on logistics, and Mrs. Drazio for handling our transportation there. All that stuff worked out flawless. And a couple of things I want to say about that trip. Oh, there he is, the man.
Chance Libius.
Well timed, Chance.
Good timing.
Thank you.
So, Chance is actually kind of the reason that we took this trip. We got things set up through his interest with weather and meteorology. And let me just say, I will tell you, the field trip experience itself, I was expecting maybe 30 minutes, us to be kind of rushed in, do the standard tour, them to be polite, and then us to be kind of ushered out. We were there for over two hours, and they were incredibly kind, incredibly kind to our students, particularly Randy Rico, Stephen Albertin, Kelly Rippon. They were insightful. They asked the kids, encouraged them to ask questions. They treated our students like they were welcome guests. And as we went around, Randy Rico particularly was the one leading the tour, but she would stop what she was saying, and if a reporter came in, "Hey, guys, they're from Goshen Middle School. They're here..." And that happened multiple times at different levels of the building and stuff. So, that was incredible. Showed us different parts of the facility. We started off in the control room, actually, the meeting room, and then the control room, went to the studio, spent a ton of time there, and then downstairs to the newsroom. And it just kind of showed us all the different facets of what it takes to put on a newscast. I really want to point out and highlight Randy Rico. I was not... I'm not an avid WLWT viewer, but since that time, that's my morning program now. And I'm telling you, and here's the reason why. Her interaction with Chance, but then with our students as well, how they create a weather forecast, showed it on the computer and made the graphics, spent a lot of time at the green screen, and not just standing there, but demonstrating how to do it and how the reverse image stuff works. I mean, a lot of time there, and Chance got to do it quite a bit, actually became a pro in the time that we were there. All the while that's happening, though, she was doing cut-ins, like live cut-ins, for either local news or national news. So, she would be talking to us, "Hold on, guys. Go to the green screen," and then roll with it, no script, and then after 15 seconds, come back to us, pick up right where he was off. I mean, that was amazing. And it just... And that happened probably five or six times in the time that we were there until her time got done, but then she just... She was incredible. She was so genuine, and they encouraged the other, Stephen Albertin and Kelly Rippon, encouraged other members where we watched you come up, ask questions, ask tons of questions. Come on, keep asking questions. What do you want to know? And then Audrey and Brady, who's not here tonight, got to sit and use the teleprompters, using actual script that they were using. And they just rolled it. And like, the experience that we had there was so amazing. So, I think it was valuable for, not only for Chance, who got incredible time there...
Yes, I did.
And you made the most of it. And I'm telling you, the green screen, we only have a few pictures. We'll show you a video here in just a minute. But showing us all parts, but then also taking the time with all of our students was so much appreciative. So, ended up being a great weather day, and we had an awesome time exploring a little bit downtown as well. So, I was telling Mrs. Deneau today, I've taken a few field trips in my time here. That was probably ranked up as one of the highest because it was enjoyable, but it was valuable, too. And the kids got to see people do their job, the good and the bad, and all parts of it, and in an enjoyable atmosphere where we were treated so kindly. So, very valuable experience, and you're going to see a little bit more of Chance's opportunity he had there, which was incredible.
And the students are going to share as well after we watch this short video.
Do you need the keyboard to do this?
I don't know. I don't love the role playing.
Let me...
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Oh, I thought she was... I was like...
That was Chance Libius, a name that might already bring a smile to your face as soon as you hear his voice during the daily weather reports on the morning.
Morning, DMS. Mrs. Chance Libius coming in live from Minnesota, Ohio. I love the weather.
His love for the weather has been a part of him since childhood. While many kids dream of being superheroes for Halloween, Chance dressed up as a meteorologist and here a storm cloud. Recently, something incredible happened. A video Chance recording of the weather was posted to our school's Facebook page, and it went semi-viral. It even caught the attention of local meteorologist Randy Rico. Here is Chance receiving the invitation to WLWT.
Have you come down to the station? Is it me? Better to do it when I'm still in my radar.
What do you think, Chance?
Amazing.
So, off they went. Chance, along with the Goshen Warrior Watch News Team, ventured to the studio, eager to explore the world of broadcasting and meteorology as they dream about their future careers. They were welcomed by the station's friendly crew and even given a behind-the-scenes tour where they witnessed journalists preparing stories for the evening's broadcast. So, welcome to the studio. Is it a picture or a small one? So, our anchors, our reporters, they all work off of scripts, right? They have stories that became the real magic. A tour of the studio where they saw firsthand how a live broadcast comes together, including Randy Rico delivering a live weather update.
Our advertising should be a number one. So, we will overachieve, but it's until we start this morning.
Here, Chance is getting ready for his own meteorology debut. He stepped onto the green screen, learning the intricacies of professional broadcast and seeing his dream in motion. With the natural ease displayed, it's very clear we're going to be seeing much more of Chance Libius in the future.
Over 40 high six point. Seven eight. So, at 8:22, what's up, bud?
But Chance wasn't the only one getting hands-on experience. The Warrior Watch News Team got an up-close look at anchoring, camera work, and production. For many, this was a dream come true, finally stepping into the world they had only imagined. They even had Chance to speak with the news anchors Steve Albertson and Kelly Rippon. Of course, Brady couldn't resist turning on the teleprompter to live out his broadcasting aspiration. Both teams have won it all, and since then, it looks like it happens again. Kickoff this tour at four. We'll see some progress today in their appearance to the Big Mac. The Big Mac Bridge after last week's gate fire, Audrey absolutely played her debut as well.
And WLWT future was amazing. I got to see Randy Rico, Francis Randy Rico last week, amazing. I got on the green screen.
As the day came to a close, everyone agreed that it was a day they all will never forget. So, here's the takeaway: dreams, big or small, can start right where you are. If you're passionate about something like Chance's about the weather, don't let it go. You never know where it might take you. Every big dream starts with a spark.
It's a waiting day to wire up.
What's your spark?
So, I'd say that that does a great job, the video that Kelly put together with the pictures that we recorded there. That does a great job of summing up our experience. Incredible day. It was really valuable and very fortunate that we had some great students who were able to... I was able to accompany, and a very memorable time.
Chance, do you mind if we have you come up here and just share your account of... Tell everybody about your field trip experience.
It's good.
As long as you talk loud enough, I think they should hear you.
Okay. So, my field trip experience, it was amazing. I mean, there's... I got to go on the green screen a bunch of times. I even got a green blanket so I could make my head work flow. I also hoped Randy Rico of a weather forecast. And I got to go on the green screen and learn how to do it, it's like quite much direction because it's reverse imagery.
Right. Then tell them what happened on Thanksgiving Day as well.
Also, on Thanksgiving Day, I went to see John Gumm, Channel 12.
So, one thing led to another and another invitation, so... So, you think you might become a meteorologist someday, just like them?
Oh, yeah, I'll definitely become one, too. I'll just...
Would you predict the snow days that we have most of the week?
The day?
Did you predict them? Did you think?
You knew we were going to have them, right?
Yeah. It's on how many inches of snow there is.
And I don't know if everybody's aware, but Chance is our daily weatherman. Every single morning, we saw what a love he had for the weather. We even heard about this from his elementary school teachers. So, somebody gave him a role. I'm not sure, maybe it was Miss Flynn's idea to come up with, and now he is... Oh, yeah, you used to have him in class, too, Mrs. Phillips, right?
Yeah.
Reports and reports every day.
So, now, not just classrooms, he's doing it for the whole entire school. So, we thank you for that, Chance. Everybody smiles, like we said. So, thank you for giving your account, Chance. Audrey and Lola are going to share their experience about the field trip, just whatever you guys want to share.
The field trip was really fun. It was probably one of the best field trips I've had. There was a lot of interaction, and it was... We got to explore, and it wasn't really like... I don't know how to describe it. It was just... It was really fun, and it wasn't like planned. There weren't things that we were supposed to be doing at a certain time. We got to have a lot of fun, and we got to explore downtown. And the tour of WLWT was amazing, and it really... I got to sit in the news anchor chair, and it really made me think to the Warrior Watch anchors because I've had experiences with that, and it was really fun. And I really related to it because I got to kind of speak about some things I've spoken about for the middle school, for the Warrior Watch, and it was really cool.
I was talking with the news anchors a lot. I asked them a lot of questions, and I also went to the people that control the cameras and the thing that shows the words, I'm not exactly...
Teleprompter. All the production.
Yeah, so I really learned how they did all the production during it. And as Audrey said, again, there was no certain time we had to do anything. There was no rush. We just took our time, went through it, we asked all the questions that we had, that we could, and then we just kind of had fun, explored. It was a really, really nice day just to chill, get out of class, and learn some things.
We were still learning.
We were still... We covered every single class.
It was a sneaky way to learn, wasn't it?
We covered every single class.
Thank you, Lola. Okay, next, I'm going to switch gears a little bit. I'm going to talk a little bit about our career tech class at the middle school. Basically, what this class is, is a career exploration class, whether that be college, whether that be the workforce, whether it be trade school, just something to start... Kids start thinking about, like, what are you going to do next? So, they always start off with taking a career inventory assessment just to see, like, hey, these are the things narrowed down to what you guys... What your interests say you would be. And then we do some hands-on labs to try to relate different topics of, you know, what they're interested in. There might be like an engineering lesson or a photography lesson, or video game design is a big popular one, marketing. And then we even look at some of the service skills that, you know, that they are going to have to complete in high school. So, that's always something that's very interesting for them to learn about, too. We have guest speakers come in very often. It gives them a chance to ask questions and just learn about different careers, and also lets them learn about what they don't want to do and just kind of narrow things out, you know? So, they keep everything in a digital portfolio, and that carries... That goes with them to every grade level. So, it's kids I've already had in sixth grade, they already have one made, and they just kind of keep adding to it. The hope is that they will just continue adding to it as they go through high school. And I'm trying to think... Yeah, I'm going to actually leave it to... Oh.
What happened?
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Well, that was my original.
Kelly, I'm seeing it in here, but if you adjusted it before we started the presentation, I probably need to escape and reopen.
I didn't. So, it was right before that?
It's not wrong there. Is that...
This is that one. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. I would love to... Let's see.
There's something in there.
Oh, we could just leave it kind of like that.
Yeah.
All right.
Sligo, Sligo.
Yes.
This one, I'm going to let Audrey, if you don't mind, talk about just the class in general or any of the guest speakers that you have seen this year. She's in my class.
So, I was in Mrs. News Career Tech Class for the second quarter of this school year, and it was really fun. It was a really great experience, and I got to learn about so many different types of careers and so many things that I haven't even really thought of looking into before. So, it was really great to just look at everything that I had never really expected to even think about for a career. And the guest speakers really... Really, it was great. It was a great thing to have because they got to answer all of our questions, and it was really easy because any question that we had, they would answer for us, and really anything, they had an answer. And it was great because we got to learn a lot of stuff about the careers. And when I was in that class, there was a lawyer, a firefighter, and a photojournalist for the Air Force. And when I was in that class, there was a lawyer, a firefighter, and a photojournalist for the Air Force. Uh, those were the three guest speakers. And they were really nice and I loved photojournalist because he really talked about, um, photography and all the equipment. And he brought in equipment and certain cameras and lenses and, um, a bunch of tools. And it was, it was really great because he got to really show it to us. And he even had a presentation and he showed us pictures that he's taken and they were all so beautiful. And it was great and he took a bunch of pictures of different planes, um, and it was just overall a really great experience in that class.
Audrey?
Another thing, as she moves to the next slide, that Kelly does a phenomenal job at this bringing in alumni.
That was Thomas Hans.
That was Thomas Hans.
Yeah.
But lots of the speakers that you've had.
They are. They're helping out, which is so nice.
Ocean alumni, which again, just shows our students that opportunities are endless, you just...
They like to give back to, you know, where they grew up, which is so cool. Another thing that we got to do this year, um, we got to visit the University of Cincinnati and, um, I'm not gonna speak about it. I'm gonna let Ms. Shelby Phillips talk about her experience with the, um, UC field trip.
Um, this was really fun. It was kind of unexpected because going into the second quarter, um, it wasn't really mentioned and then she told us about it and everyone got really excited. Um, it was a women's basketball game, but even though it was just like one event, we saw many different, um, opportunities that could be like a future career. Like, like obviously playing basketball in college, but there's also so many photographers and media people.
Band was there.
Yeah, there was band and cheerleaders. And it was just like a nice campus that we could see part of, that's like close to our schools, yeah. And it was really fun, uh, they won. Good game to watch and there were like different booths around that we could go and look at and like different activities for all the students to look at. And there were many different schools there, it was a very crowded arena.
It was their education day, so we got in for free, which was really nice and, um, you know, the, you guys provided blessing, thank you very much. Um, and so it was just a great opportunity in general. Did you overall have fun? And I think you guys were on the teleprompter as well.
Yeah, we were.
I was gonna put a, put a picture up, but they were all covering it. That's like the neat thing to do in media. Um, anything overall you want to share about the class at all, um, in general?
In general, I mean, uh, all the guest speakers were amazing. I know the lawyer had a lot of interesting stories to tell us.
I know, right?
Yeah. And, I mean, they were all like, it was a very, uh, learning opportunity. And I, I've had, that was my second time having that class.
Yeah, this is, in some career you had it too.
Yeah, like, it would just build on top of that.
Thank you so much. I swear we're almost done. So, next, I don't know if I'm, I'm a meteorologist or you are. Um, the Roblox one, Mr. Vance?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And then, Lola, you're gonna, uh, if you could just come up here, if you want to share about the, the one, the most popular one that we do in that class. And that's the, um, that's the Roblox or the video game desa, uh, video game design using our Roblox platform. Because let's face it, kids today, growing up, they use that platform all the time, but then they get a little bit too old for it in middle school. But then, once you show them the design behind it, that it's actually Roblox Studio and you can create a game to go on that and the coding and the scripting that goes with that, then it's like a whole new world for them, like, this could mean you get my job someday? Yeah, somebody does that. So, do you want to share your experience about that?
Uh, so, I was in Mississippi News Career Tech last year, fourth, seventh grade, I think it was first quarter. And near the end, we did our Roblox game making experience. You could either make an Obi or a racetrack. Most people pick the Obi because it's a little bit easier.
Start for obstacle first.
Yeah. On the obstacle course, sorry for the lingo. But it was, for me, it was kind of challenging trying to figure out how to specifically put insert in pieces and how to move your camera around and how to just edit things. And then I know for some of my friends who did the race car track, it's hard to find or make a car that will actually start and let you control it. Those are really hard to just do and challenge.
It's a lot of challenges, yeah.
Yeah.
Made to think.
Even though it wasn't my cup of tea, I know that a lot of people really did like it and really do look into game design, which is a really great career path, which could...
Because we did talk to a video game designer, they came in virtually. So, that's another good thing about guest speakers, if we can't have them in, we just virtually put them in on these nice TVs that Ocean provides for us. I mean, it's awesome.
It works, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just my overall experience with Mississippi News classes, very joyful, it's very pleasant. She's very excited for what she does. She's very, she comes in every day with a, a good attitude and that, that inspires a lot of students that I know. They're just like, oh, yeah, this teacher loves this class, well, I love this class too.
Oh, my God.
It's amazing.
Thank you, Lola, that was very sweet. Oh, you could tell them. She wants to say something really quick.
Oh, so last year I was also in career tech and last year we did a project, um, with Shark Tank and you got to, um, you put in groups and you got to kind of make your own, um, product using AI. And it was really cool and it was a competition. And after all these rounds, uh, my group actually won and it was really cool. And, um, it was really nice because we got to put our own slideshow together and we got to, um, present in front of our grade. It was scary, but it makes you fun.
What was your product?
Um, it was, uh, solar powered charging stations in public places and, um, it was phenomenal.
You did a great job.
Yeah, and it was really fun and it was a good experience too. And I won a prize.
All right. So, I know this is kind of going on, but we've been able to have a lot of good experiences. But you can see, we really enjoy taking the students off-campus to see education in real life. And that's, uh, a lot of this, what you're hearing is that or else bringing that to the students. Uh, so, up to COVID, we used to go to, take the eighth grade students to Live Oaks regularly, yearly. Uh, post-COVID, it stopped for a while, um, so, but it was back on this year. Thank, uh, Ms. Walsh, uh, guidance counselor at the middle school for arranging the trip, all the eighth grade teachers who chaperoned, uh, to a lot of kids. I know we're not going very far, six miles down the road, but getting two hundred kids down there and back and make sure we bring them all back, uh, is, is a little bit of a, a challenge. But teachers, uh, do it and we're only there for a short time. But I will say this, if you have not been to Live Oaks in the last two or three years, you get, it's worth a visit. It is, I had not been there and it looks radically different. If you probably are familiar with the entrance off twenty-eight, now it looks a little different. But the building itself is nice, it looks sharp. And, uh, so, I thought it looked more like a business or a, a college setting than maybe the traditional school. So, that's always kind of neat for students to see that, well, learning can take place in something that looks a little different, uh, than my school. And as you can see, a lot of hands-on demonstrations, it was set up a little differently than we've done in the past. But as soon as we came in, uh, various, uh, areas of study were just set up right there in the lobby, um, with two or three students from each area. And they allow you just to, to just physically try out a lot of different things. Um, so, it's really cool for our students to see hands-on learning. They do it at the Live Oak, at Live Oaks more so than we're able to do it maybe in a traditional classroom. Um, but a lot of career fields there and, um, I mean, it's just, I'm blown away by what they do and at the level they do it. It's not vocational school that maybe somebody my age would think about what it was when we were in school. Um, the other thing that I thought was really neat, and I don't know if we have any pictures here, but with some of the, um, students, uh, we had several Goshen students representing. You know, like, these are students who were picked by their teachers to represent their field and it was nice to see some former students. And then some of our students, eighth grade connected, it might have been a, a sibling, uh, a family member or just somebody they knew. So, that was also, uh, really neat. Uh, a lot different again than it was in the past, we only, we did this part and we were able to take a tour of the facility. But it's, it's so eye-opening for our students to see like, whoa, learning can look like this. And that's, there's, there's nothing that we can do here to, to get that same impact, that they could physically touch and do and see that, you know, yeah, is there some book parts that go with it? Sure. But there's a lot of the labs that are very hands-on. I mean, just like the whole thing is hands-on and at a very high level. So, uh, that was a, a great time for our students to see that and, uh, maybe get them thinking, you know, about what life is gonna look like a few years down the road.
And then Shelby, would you like to give your, like, talk about the, um, like a favorite booth that you saw or just one or two things that you...
Yeah, so when we got there, we had, um, these leaders who were students that were showing us around the building. And they took us through all these different classrooms. Um, there was like a gym for people who wanted to become like trainers. There was, um, like a cosmetology, yeah.
Yeah.
That, um, and they had all these, like, they were actually in the middle of the class, but we walked in, but they had like, it was like a whole beauty salon and everything was just set up really nicely. And we also got to take a walk through, um, their kitchen and they had like everything you can imagine in there. And then, and this main strip was like where the smaller little, like, booths were. And they had like, like up here, like, this was performing CPR. It was very interesting to learn all these different types of things and it was really informative too.
Glad you have that experience. To either one, you guys want to share a fun booth or did she cover it? Okay.
I think the highlight was, uh, they had one here from a health lab where you could jump and see how high you could jump in. Kids were lined up to do that. I didn't do it, I didn't want to help, help face anybody, but... All right, you wanna move on to, okay. All right, so the last one, this is a, we're going to do, right? We have not done this one. And I have to give, uh, thanks to Mr. Omees, uh, a fellow teacher in eighth grade. Uh, he's also an eighth grade teacher, but he's also an eighth grade parent. And that perspective kind of helps us think through some things. So, upcoming here in February will be, eighth grade students will be selecting classes for ninth grade. And it's one of the first times that they have the autonomy, along with their parents, to select classes. And, uh, that's kind of new and there's, it runs the gamut from, I want to take the easiest to I want the hardest of everything, uh, somewhere in between. So, he, uh, suggested, he said, have you ever done something, uh, one of the issue, uh, one of the issues we have or challenges is to put students in the right class. We want them to be successful. We want to challenge them at appropriate level, but not overwhelmed, but also push them a little, right? Um, when they get to high school. So, he asked if we ever done a trial run for AP US History. Um, a few students every year, and it's usually a pretty small number, um, are ready as freshmen to take a college-level class. And, uh, I said, no, we've never done that, but you got me thinking about it. So, I called Mrs. Gadio at the high school, we talked about it, I talked to Ms. Flynn, I believe she talked to Ms. Scherzinger, just to make sure that, like, we could do all this. Um, the more we're talking about it, I'm like, this sounds like a better idea. It gives us another metric other than, I mean, I have the students' grades, I see attendance, I see work ethic, but there's some of that's really subjective, based on what I see in class. I don't really see what goes on at home and I don't know some of the other factors. So, when we try to place them, that's what we're going with. So, this seemed like a perfect way for students to take a week-long trial at a workload of AP US History and see how they can handle it. And if, if it's overwhelming, it's not a big deal. It was one week. And the work that they do will take place at the work in my class, so they won't have to double up, right? Uh, we tried, talked with Mrs. Gadio, we had some conversations before break and then after break about lining up our curriculum, making sure it's pretty close, um, so that they can get credit in my class for the work they do for this AP trial. And, uh, we will see how it goes. I have no idea how many students will sign up. They also, you know, this isn't to dissuade them, but it's also to give them a very realistic look. Um, I used to be able to tell pretty accurately because my kids had taken it, but that's been a few years ago, you know? Getting older, apparently. So, this just gives us another piece of information and allows them and their parents then to see, is this something that we think we might consider? We still have a parent choice form that if I would say, I don't really think you should, the parents can still say, I want them to, and that's their choice. And so, they get a say in as well, but just give something else where they have a little bit of practice. Um, so, we will see how it goes. It'll be a trial run, we may adjust it for next year, but we'll see how it goes. And I think it'll give students a realistic picture of what it takes to balance that workload, maybe extracurriculars or activities that they might be doing outside of school. So, we're excited about it and, uh, I guess we'll report back in the future, see how it actually turns out.
Okay, we're wrapping it up here. So, um, last but not least, we just wanted to, so, all these experiences, I know we went on forever, but we have to have a lot to share, right? It's been so fun. Um, a lot of the things that we do so that other students can also see, um, obviously, this is affecting a great big group of students, but the ones that don't quite yet see it, maybe in sixth grade, um, we share this media, um, by content creators, which is a class, um, and our social medias. And then, of course, we have Warrior Watch, which Audrey and Lola are both a part of. So, you'll often see the two of them anchoring and sharing the news. Um, so, basically, anything that we do that's important or relevant, um, is broadcasted out. And Mr. Dietrich and I are, um, sponsors of that, so, and that's what we've been doing.
I would say one last thing, I know, I keep saying one last thing. You heard me say with several things, I need to thank this person, this person. Um, Mr. New, obviously, we get a lot of thanks, Wendy gets a lot of thanks. One of the things I hope you saw, this is a team effort. You know, there aren't too many people at the middle school that are concerned that they get the most credit. It takes a lot of us working together with a lot of ideas and a lot of logistics. But that's kind of the beauty of it, that it takes everybody and everybody's willing to contribute. And Mrs. Iris set up the field trip and she didn't even go, I went, you know?
She was just as happy to see it, wanting to see the pictures.
Kelly wasn't able to go, but I was able to give her the pictures for her to create some. It's like, the teamwork that we've developed at the middle school, um, I'm sure other buildings have it too, but we're pretty proud of what we do there because of that effort, of the combined effort. So, I just want to make sure that we, I include kind of all the other people who may not be here in person.
No, that was well said, I love our staff. All right, now we'd like to introduce, um, I was gonna say, I don't know how to say it for new, for school. Mrs. Shaw!
Nice, that is fantastic. Let me give him a moment. Okay, so it's, um, a pleasure to be here tonight, thanks for listening to what we have to say about our GMS Woodshop. Um, my name is Ms. Shaw, Ms. Prescor, same schtick, same human. And then I have Nick Bowles and Riley Wilson here with me as well. Oh, I have to click. Wonderful. I do, lovely. So, one of the questions that we have at the middle school is around attendance. And as an on-course staff, we really try to answer this question and try to come up with innovative and, um, exciting ways to have class, to then motivate kids to show up to school. And so, with the administrative support of Mr. Pat Dubs, uh, Mr. Nate Baughman, and myself, for the last two years, the middle school has been able to acquire the Spirit of Construction Grant. And with this grant, we've been able to purchase state-of-gear tools, materials. And this will allow not only for the current plans of Woodshop, but also for growth in the future. Um, so, one of the fun things that the middle school gets to participate in is construction days. Um, construction days is an end-of-the-year field trip. Uh, we have the middle school shop class as well as the high school shop class get to attend. This is an opportunity for kids to be totally immersed in any sort of field that might deal with construction. Whether or not that is brick and mortar, whether or not that is pipe fitting, um, they have heavy equipment there for kids to be able to operate safely. Um, so, this is a really fun experience that happens at the end of every year. So, in my shop class, all kids begin by whittling a spoon. So, why whittling? For me, whittling is the most intimate way of understanding the growth and strength of a piece of wood. Students are tied directly to the entire process of producing a wooden utensil by hand. So, kids begin by counting and measuring the growth ra, um, growth rings of cross-sections of small pieces of pine wood. Kids notice how densely packed the different growth rings are, um, and how as you get closer to the hardwood, the growth rings are more densely packed. They'll make predictions about how this might affect their experience, why they whittle. Um, using a chisel. So, whittling is a very slow and steady process. It demands a person has very focused attention and to be using their hands. With a variety of chisels and over the course of the quarter, students find kind of which style and size of blade works best for them. Each day, shop class provides kids a technology-free experience in persistence. Um, so, a practice in persistence. In an instant gratification culture, whittling brings kids back to an older pastime and realigns them with the persistent work that it takes them to create something by hand. Kids enjoy the process of whittling, um, especially middle schoolers, you can probably imagine why. Um, and it often... Um, and it often becomes something that they bring outside of class. Alright, asking their adults in their lives, sharing with their grandparents, um, kind of their experiences and then their utensils. Um, something I personally love about whittling is that it is sustainable. Um, I hope to be teaching a woodshop class for decades. And with whittling, um, we have large classes at the middle school. You guys know the class sizes are increasing as population continues to flock to Goshen. Um, and so, over a hundred fifty kids a school year need sections of wood. Fallen tree branches occur after storms and are easily found and supplied. Barry's kids bring in cross-sections of wood. I am around woods and easily can find little sections of wood. Um, success! So kids, as you can see, they feel a lot of pride, a lot of joy in the creation of a less than perfect, but still usable spoon. Um, so we're gonna share out for Riley and then I'm gonna attempt, Brian, can you share, uh, click on this? Nick and Riley are gonna speak together about their experience, and they have a slideshow and then some products to share.
Can you do it from your phone?
Yes, I can do it from my phone. Do you guys want to speak while I work on changing accents?
Share it with Mrs. Scherzinger, she's logged in.
Share with Scherzinger, okay, I can do that for Nick.
So in woodshop class, we do like a lot of cool stuff, like first, uh, as she said, we like make spoons. And once we're finished with making our spoons, we get to like make bowls like we started, but never got to finish. But with the cool thing about woodshop class with Shaw is like, we get to like, next year, if we get her class in eighth grade, we get to, we get to continue them. Uh, do you have anything to say?
Um, well, when you're whittling, you could just like, I don't know.
Instant turn.
It's just, it's just really fun.
Um, and like, it's just really cool, cause every day, we get to walk in Miss Shaw's class and like, just see her smiling face, and like, she likes to see our smiling faces, and makes her super happy and us super happy, um. But like, first thing we do in her class is like, like right when we walk in.
There you go, Nick, you guys have your presentation. Breathe.
But we like, so every, every single day, we like do like observations, where we get a piece of paper and we like write observations. And um, but like, the first day of each quarter, it's like, if we have her, it's like, we do a, uh, like a paper, uh, safety packet. But Miss Shaw's class is about like woodshop, which means like, whittling with chisels, wood and power tools, like drills and dremels, um. But it's just super fun, cause next, after we like, so first we do a safety packet.
Safety packets, yeah.
Uh, and the first thing we do is like, we just, she asks us questions and we learn what chisels are.
Good.
Um, after we do the safety packet, um, Miss Shaw teaches us how to use chisels and how to be safe with them. And trying to rehearse also. Um, and then we can start on our spoons. And, um.
It's just super cool that like, to have that experience, to be able to like, do it, like, and after we're done with whittling spoons, we get to either make a bowl or a cup. And when we make them, we get to use like a drill to make holes in the inside to start it. And we use a dremel to start it, right? But, so this is my bowl, I decided since it was Christmas time when I started it, uh, I decided to do like a grape seed. But, and then, yeah. And then once we're done with the bowl, we can make like whatever we want. For example, I started making a cup. And if we get our class, her class in eighth grade, I could continue it, and it's set to start, so.
One of the cool things about whittling is it is an individual project. It requires you to just kind of zone in, let everything else go, and just kind of focus on what you're doing. Um, which is really nice for a lot of kids, to kind of decelerate before they go back to the rigor and the pressures of academia. Um, will you take me back to my slideshow, Brian?
Do you think it would take a couple hours, or are you just focused on making the spoon?
Um, so it's gonna depend on the size of the chunk of wood that you start off with, of course. Um, but I would say kids get forty minutes a day, and there's about maybe five minutes of transition. Like Nick said, I expect kids to write, we do daily observations just to support those ELA, um, skills in a different content area. And then, so they get thirty minutes a day, maybe five minutes of cleanup. It takes them the entire quarter. For a lot of them, if you're really motivated, half the quarter and you can start the project. Nick was a very highly motivated human, um, and so, he was able to finish and start on, um, his bowl. So something awesome is, in eighth grade, you also have the opportunity, once you have finished the whittling program and you've demonstrated that you understand kind of the, um, basics of dealing with wood, a piece of lumber, then you are able to kind of create your own project. And um, kids are able to design a blueprint, they measure each board, and then they cut to the appropriate size, um, drilling, pre-drilling your holes and attaching the boards. And it's kind of a fun, um, end of your eighth grade middle school experience, hopefully getting kids excited to sign up for high school woodshop. Good job, wonderfully done.
So, I, I think you can see why the middle school's so successful. We've got great kids, we've got great teachers. Um, starts with the leadership and providing opportunities, we've got great leaders. Probably never say no sometimes at our detriment, but it's an opportunity for kids to try something new. We're all for it. And I have to thank our staff and kids for doing that. I will say, I was sitting, listening to the first group of kids and to come to a board meeting and talk, um, you guys are awesome. Did very well, spoke very, very well. Um, to a group about those experiences, it's great for us to hear that. We see it, I'll sign the permission slip for the trip, man, that looks cool, I'd love to go. And then, come back, come and get feedback from kids is awesome. So, it's good to hear from you guys getting those experiences. What we do here, we're gonna give you guys, each kid's gonna come up, and I'm gonna fist bump you today, cause I've been fighting something, but you can probably tell. Um, gonna get a certificate, and then you're gonna get a Goshen pin for going above and beyond here at the board meeting. Uh, we give those to staff and students, the two extra ordinary things. So, when you come up, I'm also gonna ask if you brought a parent or somebody here with you to talk one more time and introduce them. Cause it's important, I think parents play a huge role. Um, family play a huge role in kids' lives, and it's great to have them here. Uh, first up, Chance LeBance. Normally shake hands, we're fist bumping today. There's your pin and your certificate, buddy, good job. Who'd you bring, who'd you bring with you, sorry? Who'd you bring with you?
Oh yeah, my dad.
Matt, thanks for coming, appreciate it. Nick Vols, these are in no certain order, just for women.
I brought my mom and my dad over there.
Thank you guys. Riley Wilson. Lola. And then who'd you bring with you?
I brought my grandma and my aunt.
Thank you guys for coming. Thank you. Shelby. Who'd you bring with you tonight?
My mom.
And then last but not least, Audrey. And, you bring anybody with you? And then I can't go without thanking the teachers, Mrs. Danoo. And who'd you bring? Where's Meg?
Oh, I didn't bring Meg, guys.
Mr. Dietrich.
I brought my wife.
And then Mrs. Shaw, or I won't try to pronounce it, cause I'm gonna butcher it too. I think that whole presentation, I could just say, middle school's an incredible place, I was principal for one year there. It's an incredible place, it's an incredible group of teachers, we've hired a lot of teachers since then, but um, you can see, just like Kurt's AP piece, there's a reason our kids are successful, whether it be coming from Markook to Spaulding, or from Spaulding to the middle school, or from the middle school to the high school. It's because we've got great teachers doing great things, thinking about the next step for kids. Whether that's career, college, um, you know, just exploring options. So, I cannot say thank you enough, um, for everything that you guys did and for being here tonight. Before you leave, I'm gonna thank the people that approve a lot of things, um, so that we can do that. January is school board recognition month. Board members, elected officials, it's hard work. Um, you guys are made up of a lot of different backgrounds from our community, which brings a lot of valuable perspectives. Um, as elected officials, they spend a lot of time, not just board meeting nights, um, at events, talking to citizens, um, and just doing a lot for our kids. If we don't have the school board working together, all of these extra things that we get to provide our kids, it doesn't happen. So, for us to be able to come in, get, you know, make sure that we're approving things here and there, there's a lot on the agenda tonight. We've got a France trip, that's an opportunity for kids that we're gonna be talking about. Um, you know, it takes board digging into that and looking at those things, making sure that we've got the funds to do it, but we've also got, you know, the capacity to make sure that we do it successfully. And that's what our school board does. So, we made a little gift basket for you, I did not. I take no blame to that. Our new, um, I think you guys know we have the new printer, and we're able to do our own posters, remember the classes are doing our senior banners? So those are gonna be your posters to take home, I would hang it on my bedroom wall. Whatever you wanna do with it, but you've got your own superhero poster to take home with you. And I just can't say thank you enough for all you guys do for the community of Goshen, for our kids, for our staff, uh, to allow these kids to flourish, flourish, so thank you guys very much.
This is typically an opportunity where I say, unless you want to stay for the rest of the business, you can head out. But I first want to say on behalf of the board, that was an excellent presentation. Honestly, this, uh, I think most of the board would agree, this is typically one of our favorite times in our board meeting, is to actually see what our students are doing, hear from the kids, hear from our amazing teachers and our administrators. Um, but tonight was exceptional. Um, everything that you guys did and said, what you guys are doing in school, the effort that you're putting in, and the way you're even learning to public speak is amazing. So, on behalf of our board, I just want to thank every single one of your parents. Thank you for bringing your children out this evening, and thank you for investing in them outside our school, um, and to help support the school district. So thank you all on behalf of our board. You can head out if you want, unless you want to stay for the fun business.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Hey, Dorothy, thank you. Thank you guys.
I can't wait for that AP.
So, yeah, good job, guys.
Great idea.
I still have my, uh, projects.
You made your duck?
Yep, on my shop wall in my basement.
There you go.
Of course, Tori gives me grief for a whole lot of stuff.
I don't have my duck anymore, but. I thought the duck was, everyone had the same thing, you could pick your wings up, one up, one down, that was the only difference. So.
Todd is going to shut the door. Uh, Mr. Bailey, do you wanna do an overview for A to Z checklist for OSBA, for board awards?
I do, um, I think two months ago, we brought this up and kind of talked about the process. I got some feedback from you guys, I've implemented that feedback. Just a reminder, the A to Z checklist is really just a tool for us to self-evaluate ourselves as a board. Looking through, and I'm not gonna go A to Z, I appreciate the ministry, that's incredible, but I'm not gonna go through A to Z here. Um, but I, it was in your packet, I do, if you have any input, uh, that you feel like, hey, you know, as you looked at, you know, defined and monitored clear goals to reach a vision. We've got clear goals, I proved it right there. Um, you know, so, try to provide, you know, a checklist for us to look at. Um, and then obviously this gets sent to OSBA with your guys' endorsement, to be considered for either gold, silver, bronze. Um, I do feel like, you know, Goshen local schools, the Board of Education, our administrators, man, it's a long document, there's a lot of information in there. Uh, when you look at each, I'm sure we could just list out one bullet of the things we do for each of those, but, you know, we've got a lot of great things going on, and that's, you know, I think that's why we're successful. Uh, in most areas that we've had homework. So, um, if you guys have any input, essentially Todd will have at the end of this, the signature page, and then if you have anything that you want me to add, I have until like February tenth to send them, to, uh, to OSBA, so I will, will collect signatures, but input thoughts, I, it's a lot, so I know. And I, I know it was in your packet, if you had time to read through it, but unless you want me to go A to Z, I, I'm thinking. I don't have the voice to do it, so Tracy's gonna read.
I think the picture should, it is the goal this year.
There you go. Okay, so that, we don't need to, you know, you don't need to take emotion or anything, it's just informational, we'll put that sign and get that sign.
If everybody could just commit to a review, and if you have any feedback in the next
Yeah, shoot it to me.
Four, forty-eight hours, we'll send it to Brian. Um, and then we can move forward. Thank you. Alright, Mrs. Scherzinger, do we have anyone signed up for public participation?
That's fair, try to help you out.
I didn't think I saw it earlier, my bad.
Thank you, moving on, agenda item, new business. Mr. Shinkle.
Alright.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
Todd, it's the new Brian.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just do this.
Okay, we'll put that down.
You're pushing how long that went in the later.
I mean, I know if it was an Excel sheet, it'd be.
Well, I'll save that real quick, uh, on this. Um, so, uh, update right now, our beginning balance, it's still the beginning balance. We are now through half the year, it's hard to believe that we are six months into this, but uh, so this is kind of where we're standing at the halfway point, um, we pulled in about twenty million dollars. Uh, our expenditures there are eighteen, so you can see we're roughly up two million dollars for this year, which truly a blessing, you know, that we got that, so we're looking good there. Um, percent of money received, we've got fifty-two percent. And of course, here's our six months, our fifty percent. I mean, that's kind of how you, I mean, hopefully we continue to track like that. I mean, if the numbers come off, then all of a sudden we're like, ooh, what's going on? Usually we do have a reasonable large expenditure would happen, but I mean, we're, we're looking really good right there. Uh, so we, again, back for that chart, we got twenty million out of our thirty-eight that we estimated, so about eighteen more to go. Um, on the, uh, so our revenue for year-to-date of this year, last year this time we had seventeen-four, this year we got nineteen-five. So, where'd that money come from? Most of it's right here, you know, we had our large increase in our real estate taxes, and our state rent and burn, home center rollback, that was part of it, and that is all distributed to that large increase, uh, there. Our annual budget expanded, we're right at forty-nine percent, roughly right at fifty percent, where we want to be. You know, and like I said every time, and I apologize, but I want to say it again, we're at eighteen-band, roughly three million dollars a month. I mean, this is where we go, I mean, you just spread out those costs. So looking there, we still have about nineteen million, but right now, we're, we're tracking very good with what we're estimating. Uh, expenditures year-to-date, so we had seventeen last year, this year eighteen. Most of that is our increase for our salaries and benefits with our staff, and then other expenditures for that total right there. So right now, our prior year ending fund balance is fifteen. Right now in our five-year forecast, we got it here sixteen-seven. So we're looking at having, you know, basically a one-point-six increase. And we currently have in the bank a hundred sixty-four days of cash, is where we're sitting at now. And then the last one here, this is where we're trending right now, which, um, prior year we finished with fifteen, we had this on our forecast, but our current shows that our revenue exceeds by another one-point-six million dollars. And I guess. And I guess the only thing I want to say there, so we're actually tracking higher than what we first thought. And it's just with everything new, with our CEP and all that kind of stuff, we're just seeing how that all kind of comes out with the new budget and everything. But we're looking, we're right on track right now. Good.
So Todd, I know we have some expenses coming up with, you know, we're looking to invest in some commuting assessment, some facilities things. Is that included in this, or because we're just not there yet?
Not all that's in there.
Okay.
But that's what we're like now, sort of like the retreat we met today. And I mean, if we're going to start putting together like Mark with technology, where, what all do we need? Do we need more Chromebooks, that sort of thing? We're looking at the facilities itself.
So it doesn't have necessarily our projecting of, projection of expenditures over the next six months?
No, not a thought in that right there. That would be in next year's budget.
Yeah.
And so that's, we'll just kind of look at that just to make sure, you know, like if we're, if this trend does come in and we're getting more than we really thought, I mean, that's something we could maybe start earlier. Like we might say, let's make sure we go out there and, I don't know, do some on our HVAC or something like that. So that's one thing, it's going to be nice this year, working with Mr. Smith. It's like he could really focus on what, what do we really need? You know, we've been playing catch-up so much with, you know, of course COVID was putting all the filters and all that kind of stuff on, and tornado, we had all this extra stuff. So now it's kind of looking at our game plan, making sure our HVAC is up to date, our roofs up to date, parking lots, you know, technology. I mean, it's, we're just planning on that. And if we're going to offer new programs or, you know, that sort of stuff too. Lot going on there. And I think the thing that I haven't dealt with, but I always lean on Brian and talk to is like, the houses are going up. I mean, like right now. So there's, I mean, if nothing else, that's one thing I keep looking at, is like, at some point, there's going to be kids coming, you know. So that will be something that we really want to try to stay on top of, you know, to just.
How can we utilize this money for that additional growth?
That's the big thing for this. But right now, everything is tracking pretty good, or the form is working for us, and we're looking pretty good. I don't know if we got any other questions?
Questions?
Isn't, wasn't it like February, the potential, the first date that we might hear something regarding like, like the state funding, how they're going to do the funding? But is there any, any indications on?
I haven't.
I know it's a moving topic.
Yeah, I have, well, I haven't really seen anything on that. I mean, I think.
My guess is June, we'll see. Yeah. I mean, there's speculation, and there's a lot probably of legislation that's going on still on the property tax reform, and the fair school funding piece, and vouchers. So there's a lot of legislation to sort out, I think, before you're going to get that planning.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 9, New Business, C, financials, 1 through 8. Do we have a motion?
Submit. Second.
Motion to approve by Lisa, second by Melissa. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is working.
Yes.
This is working.
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
This is Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 9, the amended agenda. Do we have a motion to go into executive session to consider employment? We will continue the meeting when we come out of executive session.
One second.
That's all right.
A second.
Bill, Bill made the motion.
Thank you.
Lisa, second. Discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
This is Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
All right, moving into agenda item nine, new business E personnel one through five. Do we have a motion to approve new business D personnel one through five?
Two.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
I'm going to abstain.
Mrs. Wernke?
Yes.
Mrs. Peprock?
Yes.
Moving on to new business E reapproval of board policy referencing the JECBB admissions of inter-district transfer students, JECBB dash R, admission of inter-district transfer students, and JECBB dash E, admission of inter-district transfer students form.
These are our typical policies. We have, we have not approved the final policy review, so this is what we traditionally do. And if we've changed those, that would be done when we do our final approval with CAMB and before the next month.
So you'll bring those back to us if they need to be updated?
Yeah, if there's any change, we'll bring it back in that final review.
Do we have a motion to approve the reapproval of these three policies?
Sumut.
Second.
Thank you. Lisa motion, Cory second. Discussion?
This is, this is separate from like open enrollment stuff. This is something-
This is our, this is our open enrollment policy that we have open enrollment for the following year.
So where are we, where are we at with open enrollment? How are we looking in like number-wise? And are we still like number-wise and how are we-
My goal is to still balance it. I mean, I think we saw that dip of, you know, approving thirty less was-
Okay.
Three hundred thousand dollar, one point five million dollar loss on the five-year. So my goal is to still balance this with new growth. This is the application. It's just open-
Right. Now, are we still accepting currently? Well, my question is, are we still accepting like, because I think the goal was to at some point slow down on new kids as far as-
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's to, it's to continue to monitor that enrollment growth here in the district.
Because I know we like to phase it out.
We want to keep the ones that have been here for years. We want them to graduate. And balance it. I mean, I, I don't think financially we want to, you know-
We don't want to end it. We don't want to end it.
Right. So what about, you know, I know we talked about before about a report of new enrollments. Can we get those every other month or so, or that'd be easy enough to do or?
Or once a year?
Really, once, once, once open enrollment's done, I mean, that number pretty much sets it down.
Nobody's moving in mid-year, buying these new houses.
Sure. Oh, current, like, yeah, I can give you a, I mean, like, yeah, new-
Not open enrollment, just-
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, not, not open.
I would say, how about this? If I, if we see an increase, I'll update you guys that we've had an increase. Because I mean, we still have transient population, whether it be parks or that you've got move in and move out. Move in and move out. These new houses, we do have some moving in and some new routes going back there. So I know there's kids. I can start to give you those updates as they come.
It's not anything astonishing right now. We're not accepting, we're not accepting students just in the middle of the year for any reading for-
Not unless they're resting or-
Not unless they're resident. So we're not, so if they don't open enrollment-
They're closed right now.
Okay.
Open enrollment typically closes in April-ish, yeah.
Whatever the application does.
She knows.
Whatever the date, it closes, the application date.
And then typically, they don't see any open enrollment after that.
Awesome. I've had, I mean, I've had, we've had instances, yes, at this point.
Okay, that's good. But thank you.
Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Wernke?
Yes.
Mrs. Peprock?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
New business F miscellaneous. Do we have a motion to approve the school calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six year and the France trip that was presented in December? Nope, November. Just kidding. November with the outline and stipulations updated provided in your pack pass.
So you've got the school calendar that obviously it's been through committee and that process. So we'll adopt that tonight. And that's what we'll start to work with all of our GBS schools, all of our parochials to make sure that they have our calendars. We'll get it out to the public so that our parents can start to plan their funds for break plans for next year, what they need to do. And then you have a proposal for the France trip. Julia did a great presentation last time. Got me excited to want to go. You guys had some questions. I think the biggest ones are on page three of that of student eligibility. What we've come up with and talking to the districts and doing a little bit of networking and how they do these trips. Student must be enrolled or have previously been enrolled because we've had some kids that take French one and two, and then they want to take AP or something else that doesn't fit French three. And then they're expected to maintain proper behavior attendance prior to the trip. If, if the following occurs, the student may not be permitted. If they get school discipline, I say may, because there's four thousand dollars parents are investing in this. So I say may, leaving us a little wiggle room with discipline, with truancy. But I, I think the expectations will be put across to parents that, you know, this is, you're going out representing Goshen. You need to represent Goshen throughout the year with grades and everything else as well. So that is the student eligibility. I think the rest of it, I think we'd answered communication. That should be letter E, not D again. But, you know, I, we're going to talk to parents about cell phones and how we're going to update them on the trip and what kids can do. I think it is a big conversation that they're going to have to buy some type of international plan for their kid. But the rest of it, I think Julia is prepared. I think EF travels, does a great job. Will be a great partner. All the schools we've talked to. So all I ask for you guys tonight is to approve that so she can move forward with getting the ball rolling for that window of March of next year. I'm away, but I'm fundraising.
Did, did have one question on it, just to make sure we're covered as a district. Is, is there, do we, like, something happens on the trip to a student or are we covered, you know?
We have insurance, and I think EF Tours has insurance too.
Okay.
They'll make sure that we are covered. But then also, I think Julia talked about when she went on the trip, one of the girls left her passport in a different city, and EF Tours made sure someone back got it for them. And so they're, they're pretty good about making sure we're covered.
We are covered and they're covered.
Okay, good. Yep, it's, that's all the insurance, yep. We've got an umbrella policy.
Yes. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Sumut. Second.
Cory with the motion. Bill second. Any further discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Wernke?
Yes.
Mrs. Peprock?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes. All right, moving on to agenda item nine, new business G, Board of Education report. So let's say you're up first.
Well, I think I did a wonderful student achievement report today. So hope you all enjoyed it. I won't recap it.
Can we go back to that one and say, hold on a second?
We are, we are elite in student achievement. I truly believe that. Anything, anything else?
No.
I know, December's pretty quiet. Like, this is from our December meeting to now, it's pretty quiet. Let's go with Bill.
With our, see, our public relations, our public relations meeting the other day. We have our business advisory breakfast coming up February twenty-sixth. We have our senior dinner, senior citizens dinner coming up March twentieth. On to Live Oaks, or Great Oaks, excuse me. Applications are open, early applications are open now through February fourth. So best chance to get your program, get that patient in through February fourth. We have open houses. Diamond Oaks, January thirtieth. Laurel and Live Oaks, January thirtieth. And Scarlet is January twenty-third. This month in our spotlight on students, the month of January, we have a couple Goshen kids in here. We have Lucas Deemer.
Oh, yeah.
And for, he's in the Heavy Equipment Operations Engineering Program. He got the January, he got an award January this year for Award of Excellence. He is the son of Scott and Robert Deemer. And we also have Kennedy Burns, Scarlet Oaks. She's in the firefighting emergency, emergency medical services program, son of one of our teachers, Lisa Burns, and William Burns. She passed the Ohio Department of Public Safety firefighter two certification. So she critique awesome.
Nice. Congratulations to them.
That's all I have for Great Oaks and Public Relations.
Excellent. I'd just like to say, just one quick question for the senior citizen dinner. That's here at the high school, oh, it's at the middle school. Are they doing the- There will be an invite, and we'll share it with you guys so that you guys, actually, that's, Bill and I are both on that committee. I'd love for us to really push every senior citizen that we know and encourage them to get there as a board. I think that's an area that we could grow our engagement in our community.
Yes.
And so we talked about it on, at the PR committee. We're going to look to send some, some stuff out in print, kind of get it out there in a few other ways that we haven't necessarily tried in the past. But you see the same individuals and our seniors that always come are amazing. But I think we could just continue to grow that. And I think even the seniors that come now, we'd really love to see it grow, so.
I think there needs to be like, like a sign, like a big sign.
Yeah.
What if we did like, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, it's just a big sign advertising, like a corner of Goshen and-
At the corner, yeah.
Yeah. What if we ever, what if we did like a, you know, it's seniors, right? Like, so we're talking the older generation. What if we did like seniors at high school connect that, you know, kind of, kind of neat for the older folks to see? I don't know. I stayed.
Our kids coming through.
Yeah, okay, cool.
I always dreamed about that there's this little organization where our seniors go and they're assigned a senior in the community, and they check up on them like once a month or every other-
Adopt a senior.
Adopt a senior.
The other way around. There you go.
Okay. Anyways, I digress. Lisa, you're, I know you had a question, but you also have an update?
So, yes, so the legislature is back from holidays. And Governor Dewine has signed a few bills into law that will be in effect at the beginning of April. A few of those are, let's see, Senate Bill two thirty-four is going to require schools to include national suicide and crisis line phone numbers on student ID cards, planners, and portals in the next academic year. House Bill two oh six, which I talked about previously, it mentioned changes to expel students and the return of those students into school. That goes into effect on the eighth of April also. But they did slip in a couple things into that, which I was like, this has nothing to do with expelled students. Surprise. Yeah. So they are increasing the funding of the school choice program by four point one million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And they've also added to that bill, again, I'm like, why? New protocols for the school storage of seizure meds for students, so.
I do like that one, though, for kids, you know, that-
Well, yeah, yeah. But I mean, why would-
It'd be in that bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. Usually to get, to get it with phone and like that.
Yeah, yeah. And then just the other one that I found interesting was House Bill eight, which goes into law on the eighth of April as well. And that is in regards to the relief time for religious instruction, that they are saying for a district to, that they can request a background check on any of the employees or volunteers that are coming in to the, to the district to teach that curriculum. So I guess the, the organizations that, that are providing those people may not be doing background checks. That's what I saw from a, from a perspective as a-
I was, and that was going to be part of my, part of my, what I was going to bring up, but I got the answer. But House Bill eight also, it does talk about the, a few things really, and the religious freedom. It went from, we have to now have a policy that, instead of may, it shall. So now we have to have a policy that we can, that we have to be on the books to allow students to go to religious, you know, and then, but also to, to your point earlier, that bill also includes the bathroom-
Yes.
Bathroom policy as well as, you know, so that'll be coming up from OSBA as well.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they throw different things in.
Yeah, yeah. So there were other ones, but those were the ones that I've discussed previously, so I thought I'd touch on those.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks.
Cory?
I've been crazy busy. I haven't had time to talk. I know we've got some hiring going on, which is good to see after the fire levy that, that- on, which is good to see after the fire levy, that, that, or the, what it was passed to extended that. So they've got some postings out there for jobs, and it looks like we just hired a former Goshen police officer, retired from Union Township, Officer Perkins, yep, has a son here. And so he's coming back to do some patrolling in, in the area. So that's kind of good to see. So, let me ask, that's about all I had.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So audit, finance haven't met within the last month. I'm on the PR committee with Bill. He gave our updates.
I already shared that. I hope we can, we'll definitely share with you once the invitation's ready. I hope we can really push that out to our, our connections in the community. Also, Goshen Education Foundation has a meeting coming up, but they did roll
out along with the Alumni Association, the Red and Gray Soree will be March 29th. So mark your calendar, make sure you buy your tickets and support their efforts. In addition to that, they funded $6,817.54 of teacher grants this year.
Awesome.
So that's really incredible. I know at the meeting this month, they're going to have teachers coming to present at the Goshen Education Foundation meeting to share some of what they're using that money for, which is really nice. In addition, their scholarship applications go live on February 1st. So if you know any seniors, one of the things I think is really cool about Education Foundation is there's multiple scholarships housed under them. So as you know, there's the general scholarship for open for students with some general requirements. There's the Georgia Louisa Rice Servants Heart Scholarship, and that's not necessarily for students who are like high achieving in the classroom, but can't be. There's a newer one that sometimes struggles to get applications that I'd love to see, especially, we might want to share this with some of our Oak students, Public Safety Scholarship for students pursuing a career in EMT, fire, and police. That is funded by one of our local community members through GEF and hoping to work in Goshen. So it's an effort to try to really encourage some of our students to be educated. All of their education, I believe, is covered with that scholarship for whatever they go into, in hopes that they'll come back and work for our community or township as well. So that's really neat scholarship. And the newest one is the Styles and Sons Scholarship through GEF, and that's for students pursuing a blue collar career path. So really excited to see our community members step up and partner with Education Foundation in those scholarships. There's hundreds of scholarships out there too. So if you know a senior-
Yes.
All the time I see scholarships that struggle to get applications, and it blows my mind a little bit, because some of them are very easy to complete. But really encourage any senior that you know to look at all the scholarships, see what they qualify for, see what kind of speaks to them, and apply for them.
God has a, has a great page.
They do.
Very easy to find. You know, it's awesome that scholarship night up here too. It's just, you sit there a long time, and your butt gets numb. But that's good, because it used to be pretty short, you know what I mean? So, yeah, your butt gets numb. No, I mean, for real. I mean, it, it goes on for a long time. It's just amazing.
That's good.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions, board reports, the updates that we didn't cover? Can you make think of anything? Okay. Moving on to New Business H, Superintendent's Report.
All right, couple informational, you've got the, let me press these out. You've got the business recognition breakfast coming up. Mr. Dubs and our counseling staff and all the businesses, it's a great morning to support those that support us. And we'll, we'll hand out some awards there as well. So if you guys want to be there and be recognized, actually, eight o'clock, breakfast will be served, and then we just do a little networking and then a quick presentation. Some of our kids are going to present. So it'll be a good morning. I'll be out of town, I'm sorry.
I had it on the 26th.
It's the 26th. I've got it wrong on my slot.
Okay.
Thank you. It's on the agenda, right? It's wrong on my slot.
I just wanted to, I was like, wait.
Thank you. 26, Wednesday the 26th.
I would share it up on the roll.
Yes.
All right, sorry, continue on.
26, it's right on your agenda. Don't look up.
Right.
All right. Naming facilities. Back in December, we passed a policy for naming facilities. I've given you the first application that we have received. This is an online platform. So if you look at this, we've had a proposal to name the football field George Rice Field. And in your packet, there are letters, there is an explanation. All of this to say, in our policy, essentially, you guys say the review process is, I look at it, I've looked at it. It's very well done. The proposal meets compliance with the policy, and it's my job to recommend to you guys either consideration or to form a committee to provide additional input. Looking at this, I say this is a no-brainer, no brainers. Do feel like we need to consider this. My recommendation would be to put this on for public input. If you want to have it next month, we'll put it on the agenda to vote to move forward with this. I also have several emails that I didn't clog your packet with from alumni, not just the letters of recommendation. But I do feel like the process itself that we put in place for this is done very well. Obviously, this, you know, you'll see in here that there is a cost to it, and they're, so my next step will be to work with them on assuming some of that cost and how we do this. So I do, you know, after you guys approve it next month, I wasn't, I wanted you to be able to read through this over the next month. If you have any questions, this will be our first time going through that process, but I feel very confident this is the right process to take in Tuesday. So if you have questions?
I just, yeah, I was just sorry, I probably should have asked. You have to, we have to actually pay just because we want to change, like change, like add a field name?
It's-
You got to cut the eagles though.
Yeah, you got to cut the turf.
Yeah, you cut the turf.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, all right.
That costs the turf.
Okay, all right, I guess.
The, the repair of the field, yes.
Right.
It's a fundraiser.
We're estimating.
That's an estimate, but yeah. So we'll work with-
That makes sense, then.
We'll work with Moats and kind of get an understanding of where that could look, how it'll look. I'll work with-
Right.
That makes sense.
Or these people on that. So I would say it'd be pretty cool if we could go through, we dedicate the field when we play Manchester. I think that's that, this, these people's goal is next year. I'm not going to, we'll work on, on the pieces of it as we get there, but-
I like it.
Yeah, I'll work with, obviously, quite a few, make sure that we publicize this right, and that Mr. Rice does get the honor that he deserves. Okay, so I'll add that with your guys' blessing the next month's agenda for approval. I think there are going to be some folks that probably come, and I guess just see it, make sure. So a lot of people put hard work into that, which as well as I gave my old George Rice that is here to be commended for that. All right. And lastly, spring retreat. Believe it or not, it's time to start planning for next year, as Mr. Shinko said. Throwing a couple dates out. It is tough to do a Saturday, I know. There are things that go on, but I'm going to start with two. And if we can't do it there, spring break falls in a weird spot. There's a lot of different things going on. So it's either in March there. I don't want to get too early, because I need, we need some time to kind of understand, work with our principals, and know where we're at on some needs. So March 22nd or April 5th. If I were to choose, it'd be April 5th, but gets, gets us a little bit in there, just from a planning standpoint. March is fast.
That's Melissa's birthday. I had to get approval for that.
April 5th is?
No, 22nd.
Oh, yeah. So let's start with April 5th. I had a, I don't have.
I'm good with April 5th.
This would be an all-day session, correct?
Yeah, I think, and I, and I'll come back to you guys with kind of where I'm thinking. But I think a piece of this is going to be with SHP and some master facility planning and input for you guys. And then really probably looking at a little bit of finance and any next steps facility-wise, kind of next year stuff that we would need to make sure as we're planning. So do I think it's eight hours now, but do I think-
No, that's fine.
Morning and an afternoon, yes.
Can I?
You can back to it.
My mom just got a card, she can't-
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Can you go call Joe? Tell him to call my mom?
Well, let's, you guys can, I will get the answer for you guys from April, so April 5th. That's all I have. So motion to adjourn is what I think you should do.
Yeah. I, I moved to adjourn the speeding.
Sorry, hold on, no, I got it, I got it, I got it. Sorry. I'll follow up. I think both those dates are good.
I'm good with either.
Start with the 5th.
5th, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I hadn't planned that for now, moving forward.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the speeding?
Sumut.
Second. Discussion. Shinko, some, please call the roll.
Peprock?
Yes.
Peprock?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
We can adjourned at 8:43 PM.